Thank you. Lisa, you ready? Let's do the roll call.
Gannaway?
Here.
Gibson?
Kepler?
Here.
Ormsby?
Here.
Satterfield? Stoltenberg?
Here.
Windland?
Here.
All right. Need an approval of the minutes from last meeting?
And make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, all right. Welcome to the Plan and Zone Meeting of March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We're reviewing rezonings, site development plans, final plats, future land use map, site development plans, and we've got one other item on the agenda tonight. When it's, when we ask for the audience's participation, if you could go to the mic in the back and state your name and your address for us so we can get you on record, that would be appreciated. All right, with that, Greg?
Mr. Chairman, the first case we have before us tonight is case twenty-three zero eighteen. It is a rezoning for the southeastern portion of Middle Road and Hopewell Avenue. The area here outlined in orange is the parcel. It is Hopewell Farms, and basically is what this locale is. Hopewell Farms First Edition. The proposed use is for a church and townhouse arrangement. The zoning is A-one Agricultural Urban Reserve District for the current parcel. The surrounding is A-one as we go up here further to the north, R-one throughout this area, R-three, A-one, and A-one, and A-one. The area also here is inundated with different variety of land uses. The future land use designation for this parcel is split into two, urban medium-intensity and urban low-intensity designations, both of which would permit the R-three zoning that is being requested tonight by the petitioner. The Greenway area here is one use. We do have higher uses, though, that are north of Hopewell Avenue that are anticipating probably more of a commercial nature, and we have the stair stepping down of a more[184.92][184.92]intense arrangement here than we see below Hopewell Avenue. Hopewell Farms First Edition was platted in two thousand three, and a replating will be required that will split essentially the front portion of this with the latter portion. It'll split those in two. This is anticipated as a site originally for the church, and at one time, commercial was even anticipated here. This was office research campus land use, and a portion of it was going to be designated also as commercial, not just for the church. This is the rezoning exhibit, showing again the parcel in aerial form, and then some of the features of the seventeen point six seven acres that are on site. This is a concept plan showing the interior here of two-story, thirty-six unit total townhouses, and then the landscaping area here. I should say the other area here, which is one-story, single-story units, twenty-six townhouses there, thirty-six in the middle, two-story, single-story, and then anticipating that we will have a landscape buffer separating the R-one areas that are on the east and south sides of the development, so that that'll act as a buffer. You have an easement area that runs through the middle of this right now, and this is sort of the topo version of the concept plan. You have a connection from Butterfield Court that is extended up through to Hopewell for emergency response purposes. We also have some circulation. These are all public streets that are going to be placed within the subdivision. On the west end, we have the church, private drive areas connecting into Hopewell, and then Middle Road. At the present, this is anticipated to be a full access. We don't know if that may change or not in the future, right in, right out, but as for now, I believe our city engineers indicated that will be full access. What we see for the two versions of the single and two-story type of townhouses, the two-story version is what we're looking at right now. This will not be greater than thirty-five feet in height. Thirty-five feet in height is the maximum height allowed in the R-one adjoining parcels and the R-three. These are going to be two-story limited. They will be less than thirty-five feet in height. And then we will see the single-story version, pretty much replication of what we've seen down at the Meadows, which is south, a development south of the existing proposed rezoning location. This is the Hopewell Church, or say, Hope Church elevation that one would look at if they were facing toward the east. This is facing west. The church is toward Middle Road in this particular elevation. We also have the Hundred Year Flood Plane involved with this locale, and there ought to be evaluation of this based on any new flood maps, but we will make sure that that is correctly sectioned out according to what our standards are for replating of the locale. There's also conveyance and agreement that would permit all of the water to be conveyed down into this detention basin right here, and stormwater will continue to be evaluated based on the development of this locale. Both of these areas will be looked at for site development plans, so we will make sure that we do see what stormwater issues that may be still relevant to this site, what they will be, we'll consider those at that time. In evaluating this, we use an eight-step process under eleven fifteen dash thirteen B of the zoning ordinance, and essentially, in doing that, what we look for is whether or not the rezoning would conform to the future land use map and the comprehensive plan described in the zoning ordinance preamble and in A-dash-one-dash-three of Appendix One, which concerns DCAs. Both the UMI and ULI future land use designations permit an R-three mixed residential district zoning. The amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comp plan. Request follows the comprehensive plan's goal, the providing housing options and reinvesting in existing neighborhoods, and to, and also as goal G, to attract young people. So we looked at the comprehensive plan, and then these are two of the goals that are being brought forth with this design, with more affordable housing geared toward younger people. And then step three is basically acknowledging that the first two steps have been met. We go to step four, the subject property. After the city council approval of the requested rezoning will be designated, or I should say designed, so as to permit characteristics of said zoning district that will not negatively impact nearby parcels. We have the buffering mechanism being put in place for single, adjoining a single-family housing districts. The height of the proposed structures is going to be less than what is permitted in the R-one district. We also have a site development plan and plating standards that will also be exercised in this process for both the church and for the other proposed subdivision for townhouses. The other element, too, is that the townhouse design here is something that is less intense than what could have gone in here, which could have been commercial. This is being used as a buffer because, as we showed before in the land use, future land use map, this area up here, there's a potential that this is going to become commercial or of a higher intense use of residential. So what we're trying to see is that this area be essentially set up as a buffer for the surrounding lower-density-type development. We also have to the stubbing in of the, through this area, more connectivity through the subdivision up to Hopewell. Other elements involved, too, the potential externalities and applicable performance standards, requirements, governing factors such as noise, neon lights, odors, whatever. Pretty much with this development, it's, it's going to be residential, and we aren't going to see as many trips in and out as we would with other types of uses one would normally see at the intersection of a collector's street and an arterial street, which would be more commercial in nature. This will also provide for easier traveling connections, basically the adjacency to the Hopewell Avenue and Middle Road exits. And we then go to step six, there are adequate public facilities and utilities, I should say, and services available. The south, I should say, the north boundary and the west boundary of the particular parcel are inundated with all the utilities that are necessary, and then storm and sanitary sewer provided through the site through the middle for connectivity. The pattern of development that has occurred surrounding the subject property is examined, as are other characteristics of the subject property that are considered to make a determination regarding a request for an amendment change. So what we see is we see R-three already to the south here with townhouse development. We've got R-five down here, and we have further townhouse development that is located further south. So what we're seeing is that this is not something that was brought up out of the ordinary. It is something that is already taking place adjacent to this particular location. Also, we look at this again as a buffering mechanism. You're not wanting to just simply build R-one single-family housing right up to the intersection or close by to two intersections throughout most cities, and that includes Bettendorf. We have a staging in, and that's something in our comp plan. What we see in the modeling is that we stage in the uses, and the more intense uses tend to be closer to these more busy intersections. The proposed amendment is in the public interest and not solely in the interest of the applicant. In developing this, we're trying to provide more housing types for prospective buyers within the community that'll basically relate to different various age groups within the city. The church is also going through an upgrading process. Their current location, they've expanded and probably gone about as far as they can. This site, they purchased twenty years ago with the anticipation of making for a larger site in which they can expand. So what we have, staff in looking at these criterion would reiterate again that the comprehensive plan's goal, D, providing housing options and reinvesting in existing neighborhoods and attracting younger people, are being met with this request. The eight-step process has been met by the petitioner. Staff would also add conditions to the rezoning that the city council approve all preliminary and final plat submittals related to the Hopewell Farms First Edition replating, and that also that all site development plans for both the townhouses and the church are also approved through city council proceedings as well as a planning and zoning commission, and then, of course, any other approvals that are necessary for any other state, federal, and local law provisions. Staff recommends approval of this particular rezoning. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Anyone have any questions?
I have one. Greg, as we went through our comprehensive plan, sorry, I'll pull it over a little closer. We had a lot of discussion about density. We have density standards. How does this stack up with what's in place?
If, if they wanted to, if they had the spacing, they could put in a hundred fifty-seven units on that parcel alone, and they're putting in sixty-two.
Okay. Thank you. I, I'll ask one other question, just for the benefit of the people that are here tonight. Touched lightly on what other uses might be permitted in this area as it currently stands. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Well, you, you could, they could petition or could have petitioned for a C-one zoning district here, which would provide some commercial in that area, and like commercial or office or like a local-type restaurant that could go in here. In the medium, urban medium intensity, you can go up to a C-two level in that instance, or more intense use, and I believe four gas pumps in a convenience store. You could ask for a special use permit and try to get convenience store with more than four gas pumps. So what you're seeing here is essentially what you would see in an urban setting of a residential neighborhood, and you would see this is the lowest way of graduating toward a more intense area of this Middle Road and Hopewell, which Hopewell is going to be getting more traffic going along it eventually. But what you're seeing is about the least intense type of transitioning and buffering that you would ask for if you were looking at something this close to an intersection as busy as this.
That was the point I wanted you to make exactly. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Greg, could you point out to me on the concept plan where the stormwater detention is planned for? It says accommodated downstream and an outlaw near Century Heights.
This is where the area, essentially, right now, they have a right to convey to this basin that we as a city own, so they can convey to that locale. There is, you know, something, I mean, this essentially was an agreement that was worked out, I think, almost fifteen years ago when this is brought in. This is a regional detention area that the city had arranged when Century Heights ten, eleven, and twelve went in. This area was platted as part of that subdivision, and eventually, we took it over, and it was a regional detention area for this entirety. It had been set up, there was a study done to show that that area was established as a regional detention basin, so that's where that water, that's where they have a right to convey the water.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
All right, before we go to the audience, I just want to make sure these get put into the record. We have three different emails that were sent to city staff, one from Wendy Clifton, another one from Jim Walsh, and finally Jerome Nathan. I'm not going to read all of them, but the gist is they're not quite in favor of this. But if the, can make sure these get into the record, I'd appreciate that. All right, with that, I'll remind the audience, go to the podium, state your name and your address, and we would ask so that we're not here at ten o'clock still tonight, if, if you have something to say, please say it, and if someone's already said it, if you could just maybe go to the mic and say, I agree with them, and then add anything new that you might want to add. So with that, anyone? There we go.
Tim Cernan, my wife Becky, fifty-two thirteen Hopewell Court, and you have the letters from our neighbors, and so I stand behind those a hundred percent. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is when we purchased our property and I looked at this, the assumption was a low-density, so an R-one, understanding the church was going to go in, wasn't expecting for multi-condominiums or things like that going in right behind our home. If knowing that ahead of time, that would have changed some different things. You think about the traffic on, on Hopewell as is, even before construction going through, you're adding sixty-two more things, or sixty-two more residents, and so the traffic on that, kids' safety, I, and you just pay attention to all those things because we're right along Hopewell, or right along Hopewell, and so I have concerns with that. Even with the, the berm or to put up that barricade, it's not going to be eye appealing for us neighbors that live in that area. That's the reason we have the cul-de-sac, just for really the neighborhood setting. And so I understand there's a need for housing for, and I can't remember how it was stated, but reasonable housing, but that's not, when we were purchasing our, our home, we were looking for an area that, hey, had, had the right feel, had the right luck, wanted to be out in that area with the trail system, and, and so this, when I was looking at it, it was really, my, my interpretation was going to be an R-one, a single home area, and if I would have known it was gonna, if we were requesting for an R-three, would have probably put us to look at homes in a different location. So I respectfully request that the zoning and planning commission decline the request.
Thank you.
Good evening, Glenn Dugan, fifty-seven thirty-six Butterfield Court. My wife Connie and I own a home two properties south of the proposed boundary of the plat in question. We residents on Butterfield, in some ways similar to the residents of Hopewell Court, but in some ways different, have some serious issues with this proposed neighboring development for two primary reasons, and these are the reasons I bring to your attention tonight. I wrote a, a letter to Alderman Palzinski, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, last night, so you don't probably have that yet, but you will. And so what I'd like to do is just basically read what I wrote to him and cover the subject that way. Issue number one we have is the significant disparity between the type of homes we currently own on Butterfield and the ones being proposed in this parcel. Our homes are high-end windmiller homes. I see Craig sitting here. We thank you for the quality of the homes you built for us on Butterfield, and they're valued in the six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollar price range. We understand that a portion of the new development will have homes in the two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar price range. These are categories at opposite ends of the market spectrum, folks, as you can understand. We are comparing three- and four-car garage homes to single-car garage homes. There is no parity or cohesiveness whatsoever in this combination, and it only serves to significantly depreciate our home values. As far as our resale prospects are concerned, people who are seeking six hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes do not wish to live next to two hundred thousand dollar homes. They wish to live in neighborhoods of six hundred thousand dollar homes. This disincentive will take a sizable toll on our investment, sizable. Please understand that this is not prejudicial. We have nothing against two hundred thousand dollar homes or anyone who wants to own them. It is strictly a financial concern. And it seems that little consideration is being given to this issue since such a drastic and inequitable imbalance in neighborhood makeup is being considered acceptable by city planners. It is not acceptable, and it's not right. We would ask the city leaders to please reconsider as a minimum to have this development reflect only higher-grade types of homes that are possibly proposed for this property's perimeter. Even this concession still causes our property values to drop, but not as steeply. Issue number two pertains to plans to remove the Butterfield dead end by extending the road and connecting the two neighborhoods into one, two very distinctly different types of neighborhoods into one. Our dead end provides the desired privacy and peace and quiet we saw when buying a home. As everyone knows, cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets are highly desirable features that justify a higher home price. We paid that price when we bought this home. I've spoken to a couple of realtors to inquire about what kind of premium would be typical for this benefit, and they agreed that a ten percent bump in home price would be very expected, if not more, versus the same price, versus rather the price of the same home in the middle of a block or on a busy street. For homes in the six hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand dollar price range, this is a sixty to seventy thousand dollar loss of home value due to the elimination of the dead end. We were expecting and are continuing to count on that money when we sell our home for our future plans, including retirement, and none of us can afford to simply throw away sixty to seventy thousand dollars to the city. It's unreasonable to think that this is okay. Please note that we are not objecting to development. We understand that vacant land and farmland gets sold and developed as the city grows. We get it. We are not opposed to development, but we are opposed to inappropriate and incompatible development, which is what we see here. The thing is, it doesn't need to be this way. There are minor tweaks to the plan layout that can help current Butterfield residents salvage some of their potential losses and still allow the development to be realized. The request centers around keeping the north end of Butterfield as a dead end. This would at least separate the conflicting home styles into two distinct neighborhoods, sparing us some of the disparity penalty, as well as preserving the premium feature that can spare the penalty of eliminating the lack of privacy and peace and quiet. We understand the city wants to provide additional emergency services access to our street by connecting it to Hopewell, but we take issue with this premise. Emergency services currently have very good access to us from Hopewell via Remington Road. Remington is only one block away, a hundred and sixty yards. I actually, I actually measured it. It's four houses down from Butterfield, not a mile, not a half a mile, not a quarter a mile, a hundred and sixty yards. There are numerous neighborhoods in Bettendorf that have less access to main thoroughfares than we have. We stand in very good shape for emergency access to major thoroughfares as it is. I have timed how long it would take an emergency vehicle to access Butterfield, starting at the proposed new outlet on Hopewell and going east to Remington, and then from Remington west to Butterfield via Griffin Lane. Going the speed limit, it took less than forty seconds. That is a potential and negligible additional time needed to get to Butterfield from Hopewell via Remington versus taking the new road through the new development to Butterfield. Forty seconds. The city would be hard-pressed to declare that this is unacceptable and that an additional access route to Hopewell is required. Would it be nice to have? Sure. Is it necessary? No. We do not accept the premise that the two neighborhoods need to be connected for the reason of additional emergency access. Eliminating tie-in to Butterfield would change the overall development plan insignificantly. There are no significant expenses in this concession. Structures can still be built, the city will still make its money, the developer will still make their money, the builders will still make their money, contractors and trades will still make their money, and the realtors will still make their money. Everybody gets to make money, except us. We get the privilege of losing our money. We appeal to you and the other city leaders that you work with to address this highly inequitable situation. We ask you to proceed with development in a way that provides benefit to the most people, something we do not see in what's been presented thus far. Residents are asking for help with this double whammy hit of ours. Give us a break, throw us a bone, help us get something out of this, help us at least keep something in our pockets. We trust that the leaders of this premier city, which is what we call ourselves, will prevent their longstanding faithful tax-paying residents from being taken advantage of. Real premier cities don't do that to their people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would ask if, this is a rezoning at this point, so a lot of the topics you brought up, if this gets rezoned, you will have additional opportunities to bring those topics up. So I just want to mention that.
We understand that, but since you went through the details of the development, we thought this, agrees the skids for you to pass the word on to whoever needs to hear it, because this conversation will be repeated.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I'm glad you mentioned that it's rezoning. I'll try to stick to the zoning ordinance and the way I see it. My name is Jim Walsh. I wrote the letter, so I'm not going to repeat everything that's in it, but I would like to take an opportunity to bring some things up because most people in this room may not ever have a chance to see it.
Please do.
First, as far as it goes, I think we should separate this project and not refer to it as a church and townhome project, because nobody in this room is because nobody in this room is trying to stop the church from developing. That's not the goal at all. I don't think they should be put together as a church and town home because nobody has a problem with the church. And I don't know why you have to push together rezoning with a church when it's obvious it's going to be two separate lots, totally separate lots. And in order for the church to go in, it would simply have to go from an A1 to an A2. That's it. Why does it have to go from an A1 and skip four spaces all the way down to an R3? That's my biggest question is, why so drastic of a change? When everything surrounding it is R1 and R2? And for people that don't understand, A1, A2, R1, R2, it's basically a continuum for the zoning districts. It's defined by impact on the land and goes from A1 agricultural urban reserve to I3 heavy industrial. So it's a continuum. And they're skipping from A1, skipping four slots down to R3. The next thing I'd like to mention is, the plan, as it was set out to us tonight, mentioned a lot of the eight-step process and how they came to those numbers and saying that they're meeting the process. I think the gentleman mentioned 110 units could go onto that property. What size property are we talking about? The whole 17 acres or just the eight that is going to be allowed to be developed into townhomes?
Looks like just the townhome part, portion.
It was just that portion.
Thank you, Greg.
So with, what regulation would allow 110 single dwelling units to be put in on seven and three quarters acres?
That was under R3 zoning.
And is that still within low impact or medium impact? Because by code.
I think, Mr. Chairman, we should probably just have a presentation. If you want to have questions and answers, it'd be appropriate if they were coming from the chair.
Agreed, agreed, yeah.
Well, could someone up there ask that question for me then?
We'll just continue with your, and when you're all through, we will.
Okay.
Address those.
Because I think you can make any kind of numbers tell whatever story you want. And it just seems very confusing. I pulled out the ordinance and went line by line. And there's a lot of inconsistencies with the plan that was, as it was presented and what's down in the ordinance. And finally, I'll just, I'll skip right to the end as far as the impact of the neighborhood that something like this would do. The purpose of the Bettendorf zoning ordinance, as it's defined, is to serve the public health, safety and general welfare of the city by providing sound, attractive developments within the city that encourages compatibility and existing adjacent land uses. The goal of the ordinance seems to be ensuring future land developments within Bettendorf meet the best needs of the city and its residents, not just the businesses involved in developing them. I'm not sure how chain rezoning a piece of land so that a development can go in is in the best needs of the city when within a half mile of that piece of land there are five pieces of property for sale that are already zoned to accept this type of development available for sale and already zoned to accept it. That'd be like building another strip mall with vacant sales or vacant storefronts already. And when I asked the developer at last week's meeting why they didn't propose this development at one of those pieces of property, they quite simply said, and I appreciate their honesty, but they quite simply said, "The land's too expensive. We won't be able to turn a profit." So my question is, whose profit or whose bottom line is more important? The people that have invested in these homes in this neighborhood? The developer or the church? Nobody's trying to stop the church from developing. But why would the church's development plan take precedent over all of the people that came to speak to you today? Because at the end of the day, the developer wants to push the church, like the church is not going to happen if we don't develop it. The church can still happen in a lot of different ways. You could develop R1 or even R2 land and still put the church in. What you don't have to do is put 62 dwellings in seven and three quarter acres and call that low intensity. So in closing, I ask for your support in challenging the rezoning application for parcel 841109101 as it is written. And would hope that the board takes the information I've provided into consideration as well. Keep Bettendorf Bettendorf and not, not compete with our neighbor. These kinds of developments happen every day on every street corner. It's not why we move to Bettendorf and that's not why we choose to stay in Bettendorf. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Neil Griffith and I reside at 5350 Griffin Lane. Can't, is it on?
Yeah.
Is it on now?
Yeah.
There you go.
Just too tall.
Okay, my name is Neil Griffith. I live at 5350 Griffin Lane and I've been a resident of Bettendorf since 1974. I've raised my family in here. I built three houses in this city. The last one downsizing to my wife and I to retire in. I'm not opposed to development. I knew what was going in out there. I was told by the windmiller family, it's going to be a church. The city knew this 17 acre parcel was going to be a church, which would create no revenue to the city, tax exempt. So now it's going to be divided so that the church can have the funds to build their church. My position is there's a lot of development to be had throughout the city. Take from Middle Road up Devil's Glen and take Middle Road, Tanglefoot out to Devil's Glen. Has all been developed in the last several years to multifamily dwellings. We've had no problem with that. I don't think you've had a, a large negative impact on any of those developments that took place. With that being said, with this development here and the church, my suggestion, and I said this to a highly elected official last week, what, what would benefit everybody, the residents of our additions and the city and the church? I'm proposing maybe looking at a pocket park. The city can turn around, buy the property, give it to the church and develop a little park there for the residents of the area to, you know, sit down at a, at a park, a bench or a seat while they're walking in the neighborhood. It creates everybody win-win because the city wasn't going to develop any tax revenue from the property anyway. Other than that, I agree with my fellow speakers and I agree with not maximizing the development of that location because it's too dense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments on this? Anyone on the commission?
Mr. Chairman, did you want me to try and address some of those questions?
Yes, please.
Yes.
All right, did I jump in?
No, go ahead.
I think.
Yeah, I was supposed to ask.
One of the questions was, how does a rezoning go from maybe the A1 urban reserve, which is our holding district? So that's where.
Can you speak up?
Can you speak up?
Sure. So I think one of the questions was, that was asked was how does a zoning district go from A1 urban reserve to something else, maybe skipping over some? The, the urban fringe of the city, when new ground comes in and is fallow is just being crop, crop ground, farm ground. It's always starts at A1 urban reserve. So everybody starts there. When you're, when you're brought into the city, if you're annexed in, that's where you start, A1. So everybody has to start there. And then it's up to whoever buys the ground to petition to rezone it. And they have to rezone it within, in keeping with our future land use map. So they look at our future land use map. That's the predictor, the decider of what zones they can pick to choose to go through. When developing land, A1 and A2 really aren't great for development because they're agricultural land, land, they're, they don't allow very small lot sizes. In fact, you have to have large lot sizes because they're, they're farm ground. So A1 and A2 typically aren't, aren't what developers are going to pick. So that puts you in the R1, R2, R3 category. And then this developer had, it has been their decision to seek R3 based off their market analysis of what they think they can sell and, and what they need to, to turn a profit. Townhomes are very popular right now and that's what they're looking to build. So that's probably why they chose R3. R3, and I think the other question was about density. R3 requires, if that's what it gets zoned to, requires 3,000 square feet per unit. So per townhome, per house. So take the total, if it's, if it's seven acres, take the total number of square feet in seven acres and divide that by 3,000 and that's how many houses you can, or townhomes you can build in that area. And so if it's, again, if the lot gets drawn at seven acres or eight acres, that's going to be a little bit different number. But I just did a quick calculation, at seven acres, if that's the lot size, that'd be 101, 102 homes that would be allowable. If it was, if they drew that lot up to eight acres, that gets them about 115, 116. They're at 64 right now, being proposed in the concept plan. Again, I think you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we haven't done a, done a site plan analysis. So this is, you start with zoning, it's a little farther up, if you will, 30,000 foot view. Then it goes farther down as you get closer to an actual site being developed. The analysis goes farther down, gets more granular.
Thank you. Greg, could you put up the land use map again? When was this particular land use map approved?
2017.
And how about the one before that?
The one before that was in 2002.
And if I recall correctly, the one before that had this all commercial, is that correct?
The 2002 one or the one that was prior?
The prior to this one.
Yeah, it had, it had a good amount of it. It was Office Research Campus is what it was. Remember that almost this, a great deal of this area was an Office Research Campus. And then there was a, probably like a more lighter residential and a portion of this.
I bring that up because I, I think Ann and I both were around when that one was created. So going back all the way to 2002, I remember that this was supposed to turn out to be very similar to what is being proposed right now. Since then, we've let some residential creep a little closer to it, especially to the south. But this has been around the expectation for quite some time.
And, and part of the intention of this usage is to create a buffer to go from medium intensity to lower intensity to the residential area. And that was the concept that went into the comprehensive plan and the land use map when it was created. I can understand how people, you look at a vacant parcel of land and you see it's agriculturally zoned. That's what you expect to happen there. And even though the zoning hasn't been changed, the, the land use map has been in place for a long time with these intensities included. So that, that's been part of the game plan for quite a long time. And two quarters, the north, south quarter and the east, west quarter.
Yes.
I have a question. I think this is, I think Glenn mentioned a couple of minor tweaks. Is there an opportunity to make Butterfield a dead end at this point? Is there any implications for emergency vehicles?
We're just looking at zoning now.
Yeah, I think because we're looking at the zoning.
But is that a possibility for future conversation or?
I think the, did a little research on Butterfield Court and it was, it was stubbed in with the intent of that being a road all the way through. So that is part of the city's, you know, planned street development pattern. That road was, was not cul-de-sac. It was dead ended because it was going to punch through in the, in the beginning and eventually.
Mark, would it be correct to say that typically when the city plans developments, we don't plan for dead ends? When, when something is a dead end, it's a holding?
Right, yeah. Usually if a road ends in a, in a dead end, like in this situation, as opposed to a cul-de-sac, that's a road that's going to continue. You know, it's a stub, not a stop.
Right, if it ends at a park or it ends at a T intersection or something. Okay, thank you.
I have to say I'm concerned about the idea of it being R3 because what we've seen and happened in the past is once we change the zoning, then the zoning doesn't go, ever go back to less dense. And if we were to make this R3, like Greg said earlier, and then Mark echoed, there could be still a possibility of at some point there being a lot more density right there. I think up to 160 homes in that parcel backing up to these people's, you know, single family housing. So even though what we're looking at for a concept plan, I'm not really sure why. I mean, I appreciate the concept plan because it's helpful, but it doesn't mean necessarily that's what's being approved. There is still a possibility that something a lot more dense could happen there if we change it to R3. Is that accurate, Mark?
Yeah, that, that is accurate. The way you would take action on that is you would conditionally rezoning it. So you would, you would make a condition relative to the concept plan, which I think we've done.
Relatively fairly often recently, yeah.
So that would be one way to address that. You know, staff didn't make that recommendation. You certainly can, but with the church being the property owner and the church having that corner, we didn't see that condition being, you know, really necessary. But it's certainly something that this commission could recommend if they do, if they want to. So, and then I just, I, you know, trying to keep, we've got a lot of technology going on here. So I think we have people from Axiom who represent the developer as the engineering on Zoom and they want to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, just a minute. We'll let, let them go ahead and speak.
All right, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Brian Belk with Axiom Consultants. Yeah, appreciate it. Sorry, traveling for spring break. But I just wanted to let you know, James Kincaid with Axiom and Rob Davis with the Applicant, C.T. Creek are also in attendance. We appreciate everybody's time tonight. I just wanted to let you know, we did have a good neighbor meeting and, and appreciate all those who attended that and their input there. Has been noted several times, we're, we're simply in the rezoning phase. So, you know, we've continued to try to tweak and take in consideration any input we received at that good neighbor meeting. And we'll continue to do so if we're able during the site plan process. I, I think most of the other things have already been addressed by Mark or Greg, so I appreciate that. I was just going to cover the fact of Butterfield and, and some of those things extending. But again, that's on the rezoning. But here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you need to go to somebody else?
Well, he's waiting.
To Axiom, I had a question, or maybe for Mark, you can decide. In Jim Walsh's notes, he states that the 62 unit proposal does not meet the requirements for urban low intensity because of it being, it says urban low intensity zoning is 80 to 100% single family detached homes and only 0 to 20% of bi-attached townhomes. Is that accurate, Mark?
The statement's accurate, but that's not the right code. So we, unfortunately, and we're fixing this, our comprehensive plan has, our, our zoning ordinance has traditionally Euclidean zoning, A1 through I1.
Understandable.
And we also have design character areas that, the design character areas are, are a form-based type of zoning, more of a kind of mixed-use type of zoning. But we also have future land use map names that use the same names, use the same acronyms as our design character area zonings. So, so you look at a future land use map and you see ULI and you go look up the zoning for ULI. Confusing, you are reading zoning and you're, you're confusing zoning with, with, with future land use. So that, the petitioners requesting R3, traditional Euclidean zoning that we're all used to, it's kind of square box zoning. And that type of zoning allows up to, for townhomes, up a ratio of one townhome per 3,000 square feet of lot space.
This isn't being considered a DCA?
It is not being considered a DCA.
Okay.
That is a very easy mistake to make and I, I understand it. So I, I did try to respond and clarify that to Mr. Pelzinski, who I think responded to Mr. Walsh. But yeah, totally get it. That is just something we're working on actually right now as we speak to clarify in our code.
Appreciate that, I just wanted to make sure. Appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure it was, we didn't miss it.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, a couple of thoughts on some of the subsequent conversation and questions here. Regarding the dead end, yes, we understand that it dead ends, but on one of the, we saw plans in the past, and it shows on one of the over, on the satellite photo or the overhead photo, that that dead end had been anticipated to be a turnaround. A, a vehicle turnaround for delivery vehicles and so forth or garbage trucks. So someone at one time thought that that was acceptable to leave that way. The other thought we have is, we appreciate your statements on, yes, this land was anticipated to be this way from the beginning. And now R1 zoning has crept up around the borders, and it's not just R1, it's high-end R1. So because, just because that was the original intent of this land does not mean it's still appropriate today. That's why we want to stress those kinds of thoughts to you. Plans change, things change. This entire area has changed over the last 20, 25 years. So what was originally planned does not mean it is still a good idea. Okay. I think those, that concludes my thoughts at this time.
Thank you.
Hey, Scott, Mr. Chair, this is Brent.
Yes, go ahead.
Make sure you guys could hear me. In regards to the dead end, the, if you look at the plat, the uh, final plat to the north of Butterfield, labeled that as an easement. So that is pretty common on what we were doing with subdivisions prior to probably 2,000 or so. Where the dead end was labeled as easement. If that was truly intended to be the expectation, it would have been constructed as a cul-de-sac. Uh, the fact it was stubbed up to the property line should have meant that there was no expectation that it would not be extended. Uh, very similar to what happened to the south there at the Windmill or Development. Uh, Red Fox and the roads in there were all the exact same situation, and they were all ultimately extended to the north.
Yeah, we understand, but again, because that was an original intention doesn't mean it's still appropriate today. It doesn't mean it has to be done that way from past plans. The other thought I had was, yeah, yeah, by letter of the law, the density can be X amount. That doesn't mean it should be that. It doesn't mean that the surrounding neighborhoods make that appropriate. The letter of the law and the spirit of the law are two different things. So we wanted to express that thought to you too.
Thank you.
Greg, could you pull up um, Exhibit B, the zoning map, please? So we have some existing R three right there, correct? Right below it, already bordering. I think that's important to take into consideration as well. When you're talking about fitting the neighborhood and the area.
That's the newest development. That's the most recent development. It's R three. Which is what we're arguing against. It's just a money grab.
Well, it's a separate neighborhood behind the creek and the woods. It's, it's not the same as continuing the neighborhood to the north, uh, making it one neighborhood. We're to- totally different concepts here.
Any more comments from the commission?
I, I'd like to ask one question. I think it was Jim's comments talked about the fact that there's one owner here, but there's two, two different, totally different types of developments going in. Has there been any conversation about handling these separately? Is it a package deal?
Well, you, if I may, usually, um, usually what happens is a developer has, is putting a deal together and, and I'm assuming there's some deal between the church and this developer um, to get this, to get this through so that they can sell off that land, build the church, and, and then um, the developer will, will develop the other half of the property. That's a, that's a market transaction. We don't pick who you partner with or who you bring in or the church or not.
But it's, that's the only way, only proposal that you've ever seen is this.
Right. So this is how the, the applicant brought it. Yep, this is how the applicant brought it. They have the right to petition the government.
Sure.
And the right to do that. Perhaps they could have just brought the church and then brought the other half later. They chose not to. In a way, they're showing you more by doing it this way. For whatever that's worth.
Okay. I just wondered if that conversation had happened.
Do you have another comment, sir?
I, I just had a question about that. If, if they were to separate it, I think a lot of people here would have a better feeling of how the things are, are proceeding. Only because if you look at everyone's concern and, and it's been brought up like this, we should look at this as a buffer. This, I mean, if you would blow up that Exhibit B again, I'll show you my, my property and ask me if that's a buffer. I backed right up to it, and I know it's a concept, and it's not to scale. But talking about putting 64 units and a landscape berm, and having standoff for the floodplain and another road, there's not enough room in seven acres to do that. And if they were to just flip-flop that and put the church next to our neighborhood, I don't think anybody would have an issue. And you want to put townhomes up on the corner, which would make more sense. But again, we're not the landowners. So this is what we have to look at, and this is what you have to look at in making a decision whether or not this is even a plausible rezoning effort. And I feel like if I were a landowner, for instance, if this land was just gifted to me by my grandfather or a rich uncle, and I just came to the city to want to rezone it because I wanted to build a really big house on half of that land, but I couldn't afford to build that really big house. In order for me to build that, I'd have to rezone it and put townhouses in next door. Would my application even get this far? Or is the fact that the church is tied to it as one project gotten it even considered? I feel like if I own that land as a certain, just a guy, and I was building a house, and I wanted to take proceeds from selling that land to build my house, it wouldn't even get considered. So that's why I'd like to separate the church from this. We don't have a problem with the church. That's what we were all told was gonna go in there for the last two decades. So there is some kind of deal between the developer and the church. We don't get to know what that is.
Did you ask at the neighborhood meeting why they, if they were willing to consider that?
Switching it? Yes, we did. We didn't really get a straight answer on it. But we also asked why they wouldn't take this development and go to one of the other five lots within a half mile that are ready to go.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else have any?
Does the developer want to respond at all?
Okay, do we have a motion anywhere?
Hey, Scott, it's Roy.
Yes, Roy.
Hey, one, one, one question before we go. This, this is rezoning. When, more for Mark, I guess, when would the replat take place since this is, is one parcel?
They could take place next month if they wanted, if they brought it forward. They could replod it next month. They, you know, if they applied, met the application deadline and provided required documentation.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would like to open a discussion with us. Following Janessa's question about conditional zoning. My biggest concern right now would be if this were to move forward, that we limit the development to something no more intense than this. I certainly wouldn't want to open the door. We've had a lot of discussion about more intense uses. Um, I think this is pushing the envelope quite a bit. And because of the floodplain in the middle, creates a lot of challenges for trying, there's a lot of space there that can't be used to pull back from the surrounding neighborhoods. And that makes it a pretty challenging project. So if there were to be something to vote on, and there hasn't been a motion yet, but if there were to be, I would want it to be conditional to this concept plan. So I just want to hear what other people's thoughts are on that.
Well, I'm, I'm glad Janessa brought that up, and I completely agree that we should make sure that, given an R three, and it can get a lot more dense, that we do put conditions on here to keep it from getting more dense than it already is.
That doesn't, that wasn't a motion. That was just a comment.
Greg, I'm pretty sure I heard this in your presentation at the beginning, so forgive me for asking again, but everything in the perimeter is single-story homes, townhomes, correct? And in the interior is the two-story. Is that accurate? Okay. I think that's helpful for some people's concerns that I read in the letters.
Okay. Roy, do you have any further comments?
No, I'm, I'm contemplating to get in the same vein that several of you are too. I'm, I'm concerned about the intensity of the, or the potential intensity with the R three once that door's open. So I'm, I'm concerned with that. I, I think we're, we're probably close to acceptable. It's a, a little heavy from my perspective. Uh, I think Mr. Dugan raised some good points about the transition of the neighborhoods, and then I also look at what was done with the most recent Windmill or Development that came from other aspects of the Century Heights there. And there was a, I see a pretty good buffer on the concept plan here where Butterfield Court uh, comes in. There's a, a wide open space, green space on the east side. There's a pretty good buffer on the west side if you come through it, heading north. I looked at the plat while we were on the phone, and when I look at the, this, the county plat, the way the lines show on the plat, um, it actually looks like some of the roadway that's currently there is actually in the other parcel. So the, the, the amount of road that's there isn't even within the, the current ownership lines, at, at least the way the county map runs. I, I believe that was intended to go through. I, we, I've had experience with um, one other place where we ended up dead-ending two streets over by uh, town center there by Crow Creek Road and, and Middle, and it's been nothing but a disaster. And people go down the street and then realize it doesn't go through, and it, it feels like it should have. So um, as unappealing as that may be, I think that was the original intent. I do think that there's a natural transition as you approach. Hopewell, in this case, there would be a natural expectation that the price and density of houses would increase and decrease respectively, uh, just as you approach an artery. I don't know what the average daily traffic count design is for Hopewell-Brenson. Maybe he knows and versus what it is, but it is a major arterial east-west collector for Bettendorf. So um, that being the case, I think there's, there's a logical expectation that the closer you get to the road, the, the more intense the use would be. Um, I also see some wisdom in the concept of flipping it. Um, as I've listened to what everybody's said, if, if the, if the topography will handle it and the space works on it, you know, I, I, I see some, some merits in that. I see some challenges, frankly, from the developer's side. And I'm kind of doing a brain dump on you guys here, but on the developer's side, I'd say, hey, look, um, I'm, I'm gonna get more value when I'm budding up to residential than I do Middle Road. I get that. But I also see the logic of you can do some buffering on Middle Road and somebody who's buying a townhouse may not have the same expectation out of Middle Road that they would be getting a single-family yard. So could it work? I, I don't know, but the concept's intriguing. So those are some things that I'm coming back with after listening to what everybody's said.
So I'm just gonna keep going, Roy.
Go ahead.
It's really not our job to redesign people's plans. Our job is to look at what comes before us and decide on it. I do think it's helpful as projects are moving forward, if we have these types of discussions now, so that the developer can keep that in mind as they move forward. So there's a lot of things we've talked about that I think would make this much more palatable to me. I like the fact that the more intense uses are in the middle, and the duplex villas are around the outside. But the biggest hang-up to me is when I look at the, the duplex villas, the villas along the eastern boundary, how close they are to the setback and how little space there is between those units and the houses right behind it. And again, it's not my job to change the concept plan. I, we're looking at zoning tonight. Um, but there's, there's a number of things about this project that are slightly uncomfortable to me.
That's specifically Hopewell Court right there.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree. I said, when I look at that, you know, we've done some other, and I'm thinking of one of the other Windmill or townhomes, and they have pretty short backyards, but they back up to some commercial.
Right.
That, that feels okay. Where we're taking this multifamily and backing it up against single-family residential with 25 minimum, probably rear yard setbacks, it feels like you're, you're on top of them. If, if it had a correspondingly comparable rear yard setback, and it was still multifamily to it, it would feel okay, in my opinion. And with some Windmill or examples, some of their other townhomes with uh, bigger backyards and setbacks, they don't feel like they're intruding on a single-family area, and there's several examples of that um, around town. So it, it does feel tight to me there, and it feels like it's pushed up against the property line. So that is a point of uh, being uncomfortable for me as well.
Okay. Good comments, good discussion.
Greg, is it accurate that in R two, um, we can still have two, like the townhomes, two residential dwelling units?
Not in R two.
In R two?
Two tops out of duplex.
At duplex.
At duplex, I believe, yeah.
I feel like we have two choices. Maybe three. Do we have a, can we defer this?
It's always an option.
I would be more comfortable deferring this with the hope that something different might come to us. Otherwise, I'm, I'm pretty prone to saying no, thank you. So that is an option, Chris, that we could defer?
Yeah, of course. I, I would, I, I would put it as postpone until the next meeting. From a, from a, just a procedural perspective. And I think it would be helpful, you know, for the commission to give, you know, I think you've already done a good job of having a good discussion of some of your concerns, but anytime you postpone or table something, it's good to have some action items, um, some reason to do that. I think, um, I think you've already stated those pretty clearly. That is, so that is an option um, for the, for the commission.
Yes, sir.
Could you help us grasp the progression of this that was mentioned as a replat meeting? Where we would discuss, we understand this is a zoning responsibility you have. There are also other meetings where development responsibilities discussed, right? But how does that work? We would come back and discuss the actual development details then? And state our, state our concerns there as well?
Yeah, the next step would be the replat, because, because the church would have to be a separate lot from these homes. And there would be another additional step after that. But that would be, you'd have quite a few different times to.
After the replat, there would be a site development plan. A lot of the things that we talked about tonight are really to be discussed at the site development plan
Right.
phase of the project.
And the, the things are so intertwined, it's hard to separate you. We apologize for that, but uh, we do want to make sure we get involved in those meetings as well.
I think it's helpful for the developer to hear some of those concerns and questions at the early part of the project.
Thank you.
One last thing, I promise. Would it be possible to rezone this after the replat, or can replat happen prior to that? Because it's hard to look at this land and say, Because it's hard to look at this land and say all or nothing when it's two distinct uses that they're proposing.
Well, I would say that your comments have been heard. And if we choose now to table this or postpone it, the developer will have the ability to take your comments and ours under consideration.
That's not really our decision or our action. That would be the developer's.
Correct.
Step to take.
Right, I'd just ask them procedurally if it has to be rezoned and then replatted.
Yeah. It does have to be rezoned first. Okay, so.
You have something, is there something else, Mark, on that?
Yeah, I was just thinking about the answer. The reason a person in general wouldn't replat is because different zoning districts have different allowable lot sizes and lot configurations. So you don't want to plat it and then find out the zoning is not going to be what you think it's going to be. And you've created these lots of record that aren't the right size and have other issues, so.
It all kind of goes together.
Yeah, it all kinds of goes together. So typically you rezone, then you replat, then you do your site development plan. That's the normal progression of things. There's always exceptions to the rules, but that's the general.
Best practice.
Yes.
So do we need a motion for that?
To postpone. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we postpone case 23-018, based upon the discussion that we've had this evening.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second, yes.
Okay.
Nope.
I think Janessa beat you.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And nobody's, so motion carries. Thank you. We'll go on to the next item. Okay. Go ahead.
So I wanted to mention case 23-012, that's 2570 Middle Road, submitted by Switch Homes, has been deferred to the next meeting. So we're going on to then item number six, which is listed as 23-019. That's 2255 Middle Road, and that is being submitted by the city of Bettendorf. Brent Morlock is the applicant on behalf of the city. Get the presentation up. No. All right. So case 23-019, 2255 Middle Road, otherwise known as Middle Park. This is a site development plan for the proposed rebuild of our public pool. This project's being called the Landing. This is a request by the city. All site development plans, all, anything other than single-family or duplex requires a site development plan. So this would fall under that category as a public pool, park, and some other amenities. The proposal is to rebuild the current swimming pool and this, and include a new, a new swimming pool, lazy river, water slide, splash pad, ice rink, and associated buildings. This is located, as mentioned, at Middle Park on Middle Road and 23rd Street. Future land use for this area is a park. This area, even though it's a park, it does have a zoning district as single-family R two. We have other parks zoned, different residential zoning districts, and it's a permitted use, a non-residential permitted use in this district. The R two district does require a 25-foot front yard setback. The applicant, being the city engineer, applied for a variance by the Board of Adjustment at the January meeting for a 10-foot front yard setback. Reasons cited were there's a high-pressure gas line that runs through this property, through the park, that constrains the site location options for the pool. In addition, majority, almost all of the items that are encroaching in the setback are not typical structures. We're talking pool aprons, fencing, portions of the water slide. So you're not looking at buildings necessarily. This was approved by the board. Onto the site plan. So this is, and I can zoom in if needed. This is the proposal, the area that will be rebuilt for the new pool. Your entrances are going to remain. So there's still going to be an entrance on Middle Road and an entrance on 23rd Street. That private, that drive, the park drive, goes all the way to the far southwest area of the park, but it will not connect to the subdivision, to the far southwest. So that remains a dead-in, in a sense. It will remain to have trail access along Middle Road, sidewalk access along 23rd. In addition, we'll have interior sidewalks in the development and then also connecting throughout the park. The site plan proposes 302 off-street parking spaces. That's, that's including ADA spaces. And it also shows stormwater detention along this parking lot. So you have stormwater detention right here. Associated landscape plan provides significantly more trees than required by ordinance. I believe it was around double the tree factor. Staff contends this is, is an improvement for the existing area and conditions at the site. And landscaping will be a great complement to Middle Park and the surrounding neighborhood. And you can see just the landscaped trees, along the streetfront trees. There's just a lot. And then you have interior vehicular landscape where the vehicular use areas are. So there's just, it's a good amenity. I have a couple of slides showing just some other perspectives on the layout. Here are the, a layout, kind of image guide of the major amenities. So you have the splash landing, frozen landing, which is the ice rink, a drop-off area, which is kind of unique. It's a circle drive that allows for entrance and then, and then also subsequent entrance into the parking lot. Or you can continue a circle around and leave and then exit. So you can drop off anyone going to the pool, continue on your errands, or stay at the pool yourself. Park drive, large parking lot. So those are all shown. And then kind of zooming in on the actual features of the pool. There's a list of amenities there as well as buildings. And I can kind of go through some of those. The feature community building, administration building, of course, a pool equipment and equipment for the, the ice rink as well, slides, towers, fun stuff. Some architectural elements and the character of the, the renderings, what the proposed build is. And there's floor plans included. You can see the, the general architecture will be much more modern than what's currently there. And then there's, the space will be util, can, I believe it has some, it can switch to different uses, the interior space. So it can be used for administration, switch over for other events. That's it. I mean, this meets all of our standards for this type of development. It can, it, we, staff contends the proposed development meets code requirements. And staff recommends approval of case 23-019, site development plan for the Landing. I can take any questions.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question. The 302 parking spaces that you mentioned, does that include the existing parking that's across the street from the fitness center?
No, it, it did include the existing parking, oops, where'd it go? It did include the existing parking that, and you can see where the parking counts are right here.
Yeah.
It's blurry. It did include that, but not across the street. That would be additional parking, I guess.
Yeah.
But not included for the count.
I think the lot across the street that is right up next to the, the old Bettendorf Fitness Center, that's YMCA parking now, because that's around YMCA facility.
Right. But this parking that he was point, was pointing out is not part of it? That's supposed to be for the Y programming there?
That, that 32-spot lot is public parking. By the city.
Yeah, that was Ann's question.
Right here?
Part of, is that?
Yeah, that's, that's shown as.
That's part of the 302.
And you can see those numbers, those little numbers of circles around them. Those are the parking counts for that parking, included in the match. And the parking requirement, I should note, for, and this is in our, in our code, and I think it's justified for public pools or large pools like this, is determined basically on similar developments. And this would be similar to other cities' type of pools like this. We don't have a per-volume of pool water or some type of metric like that. So that does meet that. And I, staff contends that this would, this parking configuration, especially the drop-off area and then the additional, so this would be for more people staying at the pool a little longer, would be, is an improvement on the current conditions and sufficient for what's proposed for this site development.
Definitely. I think this would be a great.
Mark, this is Brent. Can I add something?
Go ahead.
Just wanted to add that, as Taylor said, the number of overall stalls, we're shooting for a four-to-one ratio. So we have approximately a 1,200-person capacity at the new Landing. With the southwest parking lot, that was not part of the sale of the fitness center to the YMCA. That parking lot was still retained by the city. So we do include that for the parking calculation.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Amazing, one more.
Go ahead.
So that internal road that follows and goes back, goes alongside the Centennial Garden and goes back to that parking lot way at the back of the park? No, not there. I can turn on my screen. Yes, that, that road that goes to the farthest southern part. And there is another parking lot back there. Is there going to be parking allowed along that road? Because I could see that as a problem. It's very narrow road.
Brent, you got an answer for that one? I don't know on that one, I'm sorry.
So, and if we're talking about the, the road just to the southwest of the new parking lot?
I think she's talking southeast.
Either, either one of those internal roads, Brent.
Yeah, the answer will be no. None of the access drives will have parking allowed on them.
Okay.
The only parking that will be allowed is the actual parking stalls themselves.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone in the audience wish to address this in this? We have someone. Maybe?
Hi, my name is Patrick Mahoney, and my wife and I live on 1927 Fair Meadows Drive. And basically our backyard backs right up to Middle Park. About six weeks ago, we received something in, in the mail, and, and I don't have it with me, but it had something about a 25-foot or 20-foot easement issue or a property line or something like that. Having said that, when construction begins, will there be any issue that, that affects any of our properties that back up there? Will our sightline be somehow abridged of the park itself? What, what changes should we expect with our properties that back right up to that park? Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think he's speaking about the Board of Adjustment Action that, that provided the variance for the front yard setback. Taylor, can you kind of cover that for him real quick?
Yeah, I believe, excuse me, it's kind of hard to put back. I believe you received a notice as all property owners that are adjacent to the park received, there were quite a few, for the variance request that I mentioned. So that, this is an R two district, residential district, it's a park, though. And the request was to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to 10 feet. And that is just specific to what we're reviewing tonight.
Just in that, just in that corner, show them, show them on the map where that happened at.
So this, well, it's just for, yeah, the, the area along here is really what's, what was being.
So that does not affect the property owners on Fair Meadows Drive?
I wouldn't say no.
No, no, it actually gets it farther away from you. So we can, we can put it closer to the busy intersection and farther away from the houses.
So setback, just for clarification, that means they can build within 10 feet instead of 25 feet of that portion?
Yeah, and, and the case here was really flat work and fencing, not even vertical structure. There's not a lot of vertical structure. But the flat work and fencing needed to be closer to the road than we would normally allow it in an R two district.
Right, that makes sense.
Mark, Mark, if I can add to it, I think when Taylor and I were talking about this, that only applies to the north side along Middle and the east side along 23rd Street. It did not apply to the west side along Fair Meadows.
Right.
You're kind of breaking up. Mark, did you understand that?
Yep, so he's, he's, he's restating that it's only on the, the variance is only on the borders of the major thoroughfare. It does not change anybody's setback on the private property to the south and west.
Thank you for translating the electronics. All right. So with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we approve case 23-019, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next case.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Uh, next case on the agenda, 23-010. A final plat for Legacy Corner Southeast. This is a final plat. The applicant is Ryan Fick, Century Heights Limited Partners. The request is for three lots, two which are developable, developable, and one is an outlot for detention. A recent action by the Board of Adjustment approved a special use permits for a car wash and a gas station or convenience sales associated with up to 10 pumps, so a gas station, for the northern or Lot One of this proposed plat. One condition was attached to that approval, and that will be the reversal of a previously approved special use permits for the northwest corner. So that's the shown up here. Future land use for this area, each corner of Middle Road and 53rd, around near the roundabout, is neighborhood commercial, future land use. Surrounding that, if you have urban medium intensity, and then further out, you have urban low intensity. So this is a great example of, of buffering, a major arterial intersection. The residential, the low-density residential has all filled in. The medium intensity, some of it has filled in. In this case, Century Heights Ninth Edition has been built. The commercial remains vacant. So this would be the first, most of the commercial, there's slight areas on the southwest corner that have filled in, are filling in right now. Just to kind of, this is using some slides in the Board of Adjustment meeting, but future land use at this area has been, has been designated as such since at least 1994. And the pattern of development has followed multiple iterations of the city's adopted comprehensive plan at this location. So as mentioned, the single-family and then the denser residential, and now the commercial. The current zoning is C two, community commercial, and that was rezoned in 1996 prior to any development in the area. This does allow a single, this does allow a gas station up to four pumps or eight vehicles, but without a special use permit, special use permit was approved. Same, does not allow a car wash without a special use permit, but a special use permit was approved for that. As mentioned, this proposed, the gas station's proposed for Lot One, and that was granted. Looking at the final plat, as I mentioned, it proposes three, three lots. So you have Lot One, Lot Two, and then an outlot reserved for detention. The Quick Star Gas Station is proposed to be located in the northern lot, Lot One. A 30-foot access easement crosses Lot Two, giving, providing access to Lot One, or Middle Road access to Lot One. In addition, existing sanitary and stormwater infrastructure exist on the site. Easements are shown. Preserving areas for that. So no development can occur in those easements. Location of future curb cuts would be reviewed at site development plan stage for each lot. So the ease, the access easement would be, would have to stay there, but potentially curb cuts could happen on the frontages. That would be reviewed at site plan stage. Glancing at the concept for what's proposed in Lot One. This is the concept for the gas station, just a concept. No site plan has been reviewed yet. As mentioned, the configuration could change, but the, shows the pumps facing east and the car wash facing west. car wash facing west. You potentially have a curb cut which would align to another curb cut to the northern property of north of 53rd. Then that access easement will remove the curb, existing curb cut on Middle Road and place it farther south. I did want to touch on the Century Heights Ninth Edition, which was platted and developed right at the same time that the commercial area was developed. When the plating occurred, an extra 50 foot landscape buffer was included with the residential subdivision. That can be shown here. In that landscape buffer was included a berm, a fence, high caliber trees, which now have matured because they've been there for about 20 years. So that's all included and owned by the HOA for the subdivision. Upon further, if they, at what time, at a time when the site development comes before this body, a landscape buffer would be required for between those zoning districts, but that could be, that's kind of shown in the concept. It doesn't necessarily mean a berm, but just a buffer. So there's kind of wanted to mention, touch on that. And this is what the site looks like right now and what it did in 2008. Just that there's, you can see how the trees have matured and trees have been added. And that's from 53rd. And here's from the intersection on Middle Road at the roundabout. This is just a note stating the applicant was willing and to pending the approval of that Board of Adjustment special use permit to, he was in agreement with staff to reverse the previous special use permit. So he didn't have two large gas stations at this corner. It was staff's contention that the neighborhood commercial asked, the land use, future land use of this area really demanded only up to like one large gas station. If you have two large gas stations, you're getting a market share that's outside the neighborhood area. That doesn't say that a smaller gas station could occur on these other corners, but that was in agreement with the applicant. And it does not prevent a future, someone in the future from applying for a special use permit for the gas station in those corners. Given the review, staff recommends approval of the final plat for Legacy Corner Southeast. Now I will note, the proposed developments for each lot in the subdivision will require future site development plan review by the Planning and Zoning Commission and subsequent approval by the City Council. So at that time, those site plan details can, should be discussed. This is really looking at the dividing of the land for, as we kind of mentioned before. I can take any questions.
Thank you. Any comments?
I know this is premature, but I am requesting at this point, if we're moving on with this, that we look very closely at the walking path, the bike path, to make sure that there's a safety consideration for that side of the road where people are frequently using those paths.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Time for?
Yep, I don't, one else in the commission is stepping forward, so it's your turn.
My name is Wallace Fairfield. I live at 5169 Red Fox Road. I've got more questions than we, most of our people in our development or HOA, they spent the last 23 days getting real civics lessons on city government that we probably didn't know about and probably still don't know about. But they sent us a map here, which is of this, I think what you're here for is to okay this plot. And basically the dividing of it, the way I understand it. Plot one, where the gas station is proposed, hopefully it's not built, but proposed. Two is where where I just got some questions. The map for the detention pond is nothing like is right there now. It basically is not a, an oblong configuration. It's more like a triangle. In that the depth down there where you have your drains, the hold of the northeast corner is a hill. So my question is, if that is to be the size of depends, the detention pond that you have on this map that you sent us, whose responsibility is it to make it like the map? Or or are you just going to leave it the way it is?
I can respond, okay. So this, the a plat subdivides your land into sections. So you can, this outlot doesn't reflect what the current property is now.
Correct.
The, the developer will have to, to develop these sites, we'd have to have detained water on it, and that's our for our stormwater ordinance, but they could grade to fit the shape of that detention pond. Does that kind of cover?
So is this the shape the detention pond is supposed to be? Or proposed?
Proposed, this is all proposed, that nothing has changed in the site.
No, 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 well, well, there's a big difference between what you've got drawn as detention pond and what's there.
I think what he's saying is.
I mean, it's not, it's.
We haven't, we haven't done any dirt work.
So you're, it'd be Milfoster's responsibility to, to develop this plot?
Yeah. Sir, what he's saying is when this is developed, that pond will be reconfigured to fit how it's supposed to be.
Okay, that was my question, okay, fine. And and it's, it's Milfosters or Capital or whatever they call it. Anyway, they do it or the, somebody who's going to develop the, that plot too in the future?
Go ahead.
So by subdividing this property, they could sell certain lots, but when we get to a site development plan phase, and that is actually reviewed by this board, that is one of those requirements that is reviewed. So they could transfer the property by subdividing. So, but the future requirement would be to required attention on the site.
As proposed in this thing you sent me that they're going to vote on tonight.
Correct, that's the proposal right now, yes.
All we're voting on tonight is to divide the property and create two lots.
Okay, so so nothing, so the detention pond really don't enter into what you're talking tonight?
That will enter in eventually, once that site is developed.
Okay.
We'll look at a site development plan and that will cover that.
All right.
Yes, I think Brent wants to comment on that, go ahead.
Now, Anne, the other.
Hey, hang on, sir. Go ahead, Brent. You there?
Thanks, Scott, that's correct, Anne was correct in that.
We lost you again. All right, we'll come back to you, go ahead, sir.
The other group that were here that were talking about the rezoning thing, you, you mentioned that a lot of what they mentioned was, was not the job of your particular board to discuss, but you said it's fine to get it, discuss it. Well, we have a lot of problems with the, the supportive adjustments. We're adding the waivers. We just want to make sure, we don't know, this is the first time we ever do this, you people are not the one that we should talk to about our concerns.
Mr. Chairman, I can try to give a process.
Go ahead.
I think that would be helpful for a lot of people.
Because, well, before you start then, you can, we, we would like to not get these five or six day notices. I mean, we're not professionals in this business. And we would like to get a little more notice when something is going to come up and we've got to do a little bit of homework on, on this stuff, so go ahead.
Go ahead, could you also address the notice timing?
Yep, so we follow, we follow state statute on the notice, we actually go above and beyond that, in that we require the developer to have a neighborhood meeting, which is not required by law. There's been a lot of transparency here. We do send out courtesy letters to the surrounding property owners. Code is 200 feet, we do 400 feet. So we do, we do a lot of process and announcements to get people here and understanding what's going on. So there, the question tonight is about the legal subdivision of land. So I think that's, that's drawing the lines that divide up property. How that property gets used was decided, or how that property might get used, was decided in two other processes that happened prior to this. One process was the, the zoning, when the property got zoned to C two, that happened many, many years ago. The second piece that happened was a special use permit was given by the Board of Adjustment, which is a final decision making body, separate from this body, separate from the City Council. And the Board of Adjustment sought fit to give a special use permit for additional gas pumps at this, at this location. So those things, the zoning, which allow, what, what can we build on the property? And then the specific inclusion of additional pumps have already been decided, those, those are, those decisions are made. Now, the question here tonight is about, the petitioner wants to divide the property up into usable lots. We are reviewing those lots to see if they fit our code as far as size and location. That is all we are doing tonight. If the developer then comes back at a later date and is ready to develop this property and ready to put buildings on it, then we'll have a site development plan that will take these exact parcels as divided up here and show us locations of buildings, setbacks, lighting, all that stuff.
Thank you. And to be clear, just because the Board of Adjustments has already approved the additional pumps or the car wash, if we, as a board, recommend against that and the City Council agrees with us, that means nothing, because they can't get the building up to have the pumps. So just so you know, we're not a rubber stamp, because we've heard that before, so.
I didn't say that.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
For the gentleman that just finished, okay, when, when you get this site development plan, which probably is really not necessarily like that one you showed us. But anyway, may or may not be like that, let's put it that way. What we're, what, so we'll be notified and we'll be invited to a meeting then, or do we just got a?
The same exact process, the same exact process, with the same exact rules applies.
Isn't it 30 days, the signs are up?
Uh, 10, signs are posted 10 days before.
10 days before.
At a minimum, yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one quick question, I can speak loud, okay? We've got a plan here that actually shows the gas station, shows the pumps and everything in there. That's just telling us that this is all going to fit on this particular area that you could approve to be accepted.
Yes, as, as Mark had mentioned before, we tend to try to like to see things ahead of time and go overboard a little bit. The developer did not need to bring that to us, did not need to show us that. But they know if they want us to move things along, that they better.
And we like to see the next phase, we want it to look like the concept plan that we're looking at tonight, or similar.
Or better.
Or better, or better, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lynn Davis, 5273 Red Fox Road. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your thoughtful consideration on that Hopewell business. You're not rubber stamping things and we appreciate that. Since this is going to be a site for a gas station, car wash and convenience store, I'm wondering how much input we as citizens are going to have in terms of placement of things? And I, I know this is just the plot thing, but the plat thing, but how much input are we as citizens going to have in terms of placement of things? You mentioned, ma'am, the, the bike path and the safety issue, that's a huge thing. The bike path along that way is used all the time. People are walking their dogs, they're walking their kids, the kids are running around, it's a real safety issue there. And I'm, I'm hoping that you think about that and consider that. The other issue that I, I really have that you need to think about and consider, when you looked at that plan, you brought up the, the berm and the, and the trees and the wooden fence as a buffer. That is not a buffer for a 10 car gas station. That is not a buffer for a convenience store and a car wash. That was intended as C two for a four car or a four pump gas station, period. So I hope in the future you will consider a major buffer for that area, because I don't even, I don't live on that side of the road, but I'm very concerned about the citizens that do live on that side and the concerns with the noise and the safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address us? Anyone in the commission have any additional comments? Oh, go ahead, sir.
This is a quick, Mike Davis, 5273 Red Fox Road, just one question, talking about reconfiguring the detention pond. To me, that sounds like making it smaller, and that would be a concern, I would think, as far as water runoff. Is that, am I assuming correctly, or is it going to remain the same size?
I can let Brent, if we get a good connection, speak on that.
I've been texting with him, he's trying to get into a better location. So I think he's, I think he's available now.
Scott, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Little bit of the backwoods here, but yeah, no, that was absolutely not the, the situation. They would have to meet our newest ordinance, which is actually more restrictive than what would have been done 15 or 20 years ago when this was originally graded.
Good to hear, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brent.
Thank you.
Brent, since we got you back, you have anything to add?
Only that the, the situation with the rec trail, the majority of our recreational trails are actually located along arterial or collector streets, which are our busiest streets. So I understand the concern about crossing those, but that's very frequent. So we want those trails to be located where the most users can use them. We will be very careful when we get to the site development plan to evaluate how we cross those and the safest method possible.
Yeah, and just, just a bootstrap to that, Brent, it's Roy. We've had, in the last meeting or two, we had some, some comments too. I think maybe when we were looking at the other development in the northwest corner, I've personally encountered, you know, life threatening action in the roundabout, just the, the ability and the maybe flashing lights or something, because the cars do not stop at the roundabout for pedestrians. I don't know that they're obligated to the way it's signaled or signed right now, but that I would concur with Anne, that we really need to make sure we make every effort because of the additional traffic and intensity and everything going on north at TBK and everything. We need to really clamp down on that for sure.
Thank you, Roy.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, go ahead.
Since the developers here, I want to just touch on briefly a little history lesson to respond to Lynn's question. And when the McDonald's went in on 53rd, Ryan, you were probably dashing over there during your lunch hour. It was a long time ago, you weren't here, I know, when we talked about it. There were houses that abutted that McDonald's property and they were not happy about the fact that a McDonald's was going in there, even though it was zoned for a McDonald's. Everything that they were developing there was appropriate for that arterial road. But there were a number of meetings with the, the neighbors and the city, and the developer was very accommodating to modifying their plans to move the drive through to the front towards 53rd Street rather than where it was originally intended in the back. There were other modifications, the building was originally to run perpendicular to 53rd, which then put the back of the building much closer to the homes. Was reoriented to go parallel to 53rd Street, so it removed it even further. So hopefully as this project develops, those types of issues will be taken into consideration to make it as accommodating as possible for the people who live nearby.
Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Pastor Elaine Olson and I live with my husband at 5296 Red Fox Road. I also understand that this. I also understand that this is just a meeting about the plat and a vote upon that. I guess I would like to affirm what the woman just said about our needs being listened to and, and our voices heard along the process. Even though that isn't happening this evening, I just want to affirm that many of us are here and many of us want to be heard, and we thank you for hearing us. And we will just speak, continue to speak to this as it moves along the process. So thank you for listening, thank you for paying attention, for making this a good addition to Bettendorf and not just some more commerce. So thank you again.
Great, thank you.
I would say we've been, I, I just really want to thank our city staff for working so closely with the developers, because they really do an excellent job in taking into consideration what they know our citizens need. And they do work, like you stated, with the developers a lot. And the developers that we have here are excellent. And they do a really good job in working together to create what's good for the community.
Thank you.
Okay. With that?
One more.
Craig wants to speak, okay. No? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 23-010, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries. Okay, go ahead. Well, maybe wait a second, let folks clear out.
Are we done?
There's another item, but you, you can stick around if you want.
Yeah, I never seen one before, getting educated tonight.
And you're gonna see one now that I haven't seen before, so.
Yeah, this is a whole new kind of case for us.
Good luck with your.
Yeah. I will note the next, I'll kind of run through the agenda, because there's a few cases that are gonna be either postponed. So cases 23-013 through 23-017, those have been moved, moved to a special meeting scheduled for April 5th. Just a reminder. Same time, same day of the week and place.
Same channel.
And then case 22-097 was deferred at the last meeting, correct?
Correct, that's right.
And that is not being heard, we have no, no updates for that tonight.
Okay, that's correct. Okay, thank you.
All right. Now to case 23-20. Case 23-20, so this is a proposal for annexation to the city of Bettendorf. This is located Forest Grove Drive and Wells Ferry Road. The applicant is Windmiller Development, Development. The current owner of the property is Forest Grove Properties LLC. The area shaded in yellow is the, what's being requested to be annexed into the city. So this is north of Forest Grove Drive, 195th Street in the county, and west of Wells Ferry Road, and then due south of Interstate 80. This request is a 100% of voluntary annexation of 80 acres related to a proposed development, including 70-plus single-family homes, an indoor storage area, and a future site of a new Pleasant Valley School District Elementary School. Currently, it's, the, the land use is agricultural, is evident on the aerial. There is one small section that will be preserved. That's the site of a national historic structure, Forest Grove School Number 5. This is just the annexation exhibit with the legal description. So the territorial boundaries are proposed to change to the center lines of Forest Grove Road, center line of that. So similar to what we have at Wells Ferry and Crispwell currently with the county. And then also to Wells Ferry. This will, then to the northern section would be actually changed to roughly the center line of I-80, that's the section line there, that this exhibit will be amended to reflect that moving forward. The city will amend shared maintenance agreements with the county for Forest Grove Drive and Wells Ferry to reflect those changes. The proposed concept related to this annexation, kind of peeking forward, as mentioned, single-family homes located all throughout here. And then we've got, north, there's a creek that runs through here, and then this is I-80. We have a proposal for some indoor storage on a site that's, has some encumbrances by the floodplain, the interstate, and one access point really off of Wells Ferry. And then on the corner of Forest Grove Drive and Wells Ferry, Pleasant Valley Schools has worked with the developer for a future site of an elementary school for an expansion. This development will have sanitary sewer access, proposed by the addition of a lift station. That lift station would, will also serve Sterling Woods and Spencer Hollow and future development located north of I-80. Two existing lift stations that serve Spencer Hollow and the Sterling Woods development would then be redundant and be removed. So this is kind of the timing of this, and the developer working with the city engineer have proposed a way to serve all of these areas and the development related to the annexation proposal and remove net, net negative, so one less lift station for the city. So this is greatly reduce public works maintenance and expenses related to lift stations. Kind of taking a step back, annexations have not, there has not been many annexation cases in recent memory with the city. In 2000, there's been two since 2000, one in 2013 and one in 2012. 2012 was a smart, small parcel just south of US 67. And then 2013 was some farm ground that was really reconfigured, so it was one taxing district, and it still is farm ground. All prior annexations go back, you have to go back to 1971, when a majority of the, as you can see in the large red area, a lot of that area was annexed, which is now north Bettendorf. And then you can go farther back into, to the previous, the initial city footprint back in 1903. Having said that, the procedure for reviewing annexations is not set in code, but we do have a method for looking at the comp plan and making sure that these land use decisions, it's a land use decision, and that's before this board, this commission. And we do have an annexation section of our comp plan, which establishes growth policy and strategic goals to guide these decisions. This includes an annexation map and a seven-point strategy. That strategy includes annexing adjacent land, voluntary annexations, and a number of other things, which just this annexation is consistent with. I will note the map does not show the proposed annexation area on it. This map was adopted in 2017 under the premise that this area could not be sewed, given the current situat, the perceived abilities at the time. Having relooked at the, those lift stations, as I mentioned, this area can be sewed by the reconfiguration of one lift station and removing another. So this area is now meets, is consistent with the comp plan and staff's opinion. In addition, this area is shown on our long-term growth areas map. It's in our comp plan, it's actually even shown on our future land use map. And it's also consistent with many comprehensive plan strategic goals, promoting housing development in an area with basic, basic infrastructure like roads and now the sewer, sanitary sewer, and then also enhancing the quality of existing development with that proposed elementary school key in mind. Touching a little on how the county and their policies. So this would be, it's a voluntary annexation, so there's, you're allowed to go up to 20% involuntary, but this is not the case. 100% voluntary. Currently, the, the county has this land zoned in their ag general zoning district. And, and the county, that's kind of their holding area for future development. So they aren't opening this up for development, they're waiting to see, you know, what's coming. Their future land use shows us as future residential, but also importantly, as in their to-be annexed land use designation. So that land use designation requires by policy that any developments that come before the county, they point them to the city that's adjacent to them first. And the city really has to say, no, we can't serve them for whatever reasons, and then the county can proceed with considering the development. With this in mind, this is what, exactly what was planned, honestly. So the, the applicant has come before to the city, asked to annex. That's what's under, that's what's being proposed. This land use policy, as I mentioned, by the county, has been, has been and continues to be their policy towards urban areas and just to drive that development towards cities. Let me cover the process a little bit. This is the first review of the proposal, and it's current tonight. The recommendation of the Planning Commission will be forwarded to city council. City council will then vote on whether to accept the annexation proposal via resolution. Upon, if there were a positive vote and a resolution was, was to be accepting this annexation, it's then forwarded to the state of Iowa City Development Board. That's another hearing, and that's run by the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Only upon approval of that annexation by the city development board would then that, that change our city boundaries and this land would become, come within the city. And upon approval, the city and the developer, the city can hear things such as future land use map amendments, rezonings, plating, site development plans, et cetera, just as we do with properties that are in proposals currently located within city limits. Having touched on all those things, the proposal meets all adopted policies for consideration of annexations and development. Staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval for this annexation proposal to city council, and I can take any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just jump into? This has been, and I appreciate Taylor, Taylor's work on this. He's done a really great job. And this issue of annexation has been one that city council has had on their radar for a long time. We all know that we're a growing city and we're very thankful for that. So I, you know, I, I think this is the first one we've seen, but I imagine we will see more. But this particular proposal fits our annexation policy to a T, notably because there's a project and also because infrastructure can be accommodated. And so it's, it, it really, you know, as Taylor said, it's a process. It's a collaborative process with our adjoining cities. This is within two miles of another city, which is really why we need to go to the city development board. Typically, if, if it's 100% voluntary and, and you're not within two miles, you don't have to go to, to the board. Or if it was an 80/20 voluntary, so you had 80% of the property owners within the area wanting to come in, but 20% did not, that's still technically a voluntary annexation. So you can't have the minority kind of holding up what the majority wants to do, what the supermajority wants to do. But here, it's a 100%. Obviously, the applicant, the, the owner of the property wants to come into the city, and it does meet our, our policy. I, and there's, you know, Taylor mentioned the county will work with the, with Leclerc, with the utilities, the school, obviously, he knows about it. So it's a, it's a collaborative process. We will work through the process, assuming that, you know, you and the, the city council want to move forward. But I do just again want to thank Taylor and Mark's whole team for, for their work on this.
I, I would echo that, because when I read through the whole paper that you gave us, Taylor, it was very easy to understand. It was very well laid out, and I didn't feel like I was gonna come to the meeting tonight with a lot of questions. So I appreciated that, and I have to comment, the Windmillers seem to keep bringing us cutting-edge projects, because, you know, we went through the whole comp planning, and then we looked at the Woodlands, which was the perfect example of what we were trying to do. And Scott and I just said, we've never had to deal with an annexation before. So now here's a new thing, we're growing and looking for ways to expand.
And if I can just add, while we're handing out compliments, I, Brett, I think the biggest challenge, or one of the major challenges was the sewer issue. And so Brent and Brent's ability to look at that and the Windmillers' ability to, to look at that collaboratively, I think is a really good thing, so.
Good, great.
So as we move forward with this, no matter, once the annexation, annexation is approved, then if for some reason you don't want to develop it, someone else could. It's not conditional.
That's right. I mean, there's theoretically could be certain development agreements along the way, but they're, all of the normal land use processes still have to go, have to go through.
Yeah, we're not zoning or site planning anything, we're just changing the city border at this time.
That's the only thing we're looking at.
I, I kept, I must be skeptical about things these days. I don't know why I would be, but I kept reading everything, thinking, what's the downside?
So, I mean, I.
What's the catch?
I think that's kind of a fair analysis, and maybe, I think Chris and Taylor have covered it, so I'm not going to do too much of that. But if we expand our boundaries, we also expand our cost of operations, our cost of infrastructure, our cost of maintenance. And so we need to be really choosy when we do that.
Because you have to take now the ability to pick up garbage there. You have to be able to clear the roads there, maintain the roads there.
Fire, police, planning services, all, all the things we do. And we now have a bigger house. And Interstate 80 is, is kind of a cap on our city. And so just willy-nilly going out and annexing north of Interstate 80 is really problematic from, from my perspective. But here, we have, we have a punch through, we have that connectivity, we have that north-south connectivity. I think that's one of the things Bettendorf really is gonna struggle with after I'm gone, even, you know, is, is how we get over that interstate. But we happen to have a spot where we can get over the interstate, where we can probably improve the way we sewer our community by going from three lift stations to two or one, a net drop in lift stations, which are single points failure, you don't want to take those out of any system. And then you also have the, the, the actual project that we see a lot of benefit in, in the quality of the housing, quality of school district, enhancing our community. So, yeah. If you were just saying, hey, let's annex north of Interstate 80 willy-nilly, I'd think, hey, you can't do that, you're gonna have way too many, way too many expenses. This makes sense.
I've only experienced where you have the state come in and want to take the ground, or a city that wanted to annex. When I was in high school, Davenport, just, they decided they wanted north, or excuse me, west of 280. And thanks to my dad and a few other people, they fought them off. It, it was not logical for them at the time, but I appreciate the 100% wanting to be annexed instead of the other way around.
And a key component to that is there's, you know, there's no res, the county's planning there for kind of holding that area, waiting for their, our decision as a city, they, that's been their policy. They've opened this up to residential, say that it was rezoned, or their future land use plan, plan changed. You would see minimum, in fact, they're proposing, as recently today in the North Scott Press, they're probably going to increase the minimum lot size in the county to 1.3 acres. That's due to the, the septic at like Venwoods and some of these other developments are just not adequate for the size of houses, the lot sizes. So, and we have to adhere by those standards. If we chose, chose to develop any type of residential with septic, we have to have, those lot sizes would be 1.3 acres. But we have a policy of developing going forward, have been with, for sewer, sanitary sewer connections only. And that's why this site wasn't really on the, on the list, but Brent and Windmiller team kind of worked that out, and that's why it meets that really critical requirement for annexation.
Great. Sir, do you still have a question?
Yeah, I just, that was my concern, the storm, the storm, not concern, but my question. The stormwater and the sewer runoff, was it going down to the valley? To the lift station and down to Davenport? Or is it going out to Leclerc?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a good question.
The question is, they got prob, you know, problems along that line. It's been in the news, Bettendorf and Davenport's had their, about paying the way. So how's this gonna develop with Davenport? Are they gonna bless this, you know, the, the new, the new runoff? I don't know, what's the DNR saying?
Shut the valve off on us?
No, just a question, I, I don't know.
Fair question, so.
I think our city engineer can answer that.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, I hate, keep checking the connection. So the area in question is, obviously, it's south of 80, so everything's going to run to the north. The stormwater detention will be required, they'll have to detain, and then ultimately released to Spencer Creek. And the sanitary sewer will have to go through part of a approval process through the Iowa DNR because we'll have to build a lift station there, that'll be part of our Spencer Creek lift station. I will say, we are in very good standing with the Iowa DNR. We've been doing a lot of work with our joint-use sewers, so that's us, Davenport, Riverdale, and Panorama Park, and have drastically reduced the flows that are going to the plant, which helps us and Davenport, being the two largest owners, as we continue to try to grow to the north and to the west.
Did that answer your question?
Well, yeah, the DNR is the grill in the, you know, in the place. And I understand the problems they have, but I was also told, you guys would know more than I do because you got on the city, but I was informed that the DNR or EPA has given letters to everybody along the river. I was told by 2025, there's no more raw sewage dumped in the river unless there's big hefty fines. Right or wrong, I don't know.
Shouldn't we all sewage dump the river now?
I was going to say, I hope, I hope that's the case. I hope that's the case, we don't need any raw sewage going in the river.
I mean, when they, when they get heavy storms and that and floods, they open up down at Davenport, they have no place for it to go, and it goes out in the river.
Yeah, we are, we're far from that, unfortunately, the only time we run into that is when we have flood conditions, and the sewer treatment plant cannot overtake the 30, 40, 50, sometimes 80 million gallons a day that the treatment plant sees. And that's simply because of the river influence, that has nothing to do with what we're looking at as new development continues to the north.
Thank you. Any other additional comments or questions? Let me get a motion.
I'll take a motion to approve case number 23-020, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Taylor. Commission updates?
Commission update is just remember, we have that special meeting scheduled. And point of clarification, there's only one item on that special meeting. There was a postponement tonight, and if I heard the motion correctly, it was postponed to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
That's right.
Correct, thank you. All right. We're adjourned.